All the December four twenty twenty five rego planning commission meeting to order. Um, first of all, let's, if no one has any objection, we'll move item four up to uh be the second item. So have it someone. You get yeah, uh, for a little minutes from the November sixth meeting.
Motion, second.
I have a motion in the second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And who same sound? No, please. Alright, uh, rezon requests from A one to R one point five for parcel eight oh five two oh three six nine dash seven fifty. By Hurt Little and Jerry Foyle. This is a. Piece of property out on Ditt Myers.
I believe Jeff Banks is here.
Fine. Tell us what you.
Basically just one reason it's what you do the same time in subdivision similar to the ones Jason.
Of course, phase one, phase two Hudson Heights, those are both R one subdivisions, but they've. Uh, got kind of modified footprint from what we used to expect. They're eighty foot wide, about hundred and twenty feet deep, I think approximately. But the subdivision battlefield there, you see that it touches on the northwest. It is an R one point five. Uh, Stone Crest is an R one point five, which it puts up to on the east.
How much of the property do you anticipate will be buildable with the drainage?
Will be, oh, yes. Um. About, I think it's twenty four, or probably the one point five, speaking about seventeen acres of it. Along the, where the big A is right there, we're, we're, this rezoning passes, we're gonna change those along the, there because that sewer line. So to the west, that sewer line, we're gonna make four one acre lots across there.
So that'd be along the river?
Yeah.
It's part of that floodplain?
Not up there. The other side, on the east side is, the east side is all.
I know part of Hudson Heights was in floodplain.
Oh, was it?
In old back area.
How many, how many total do you say it was? Houses you gonna put on there?
I think the one point five, the eighty five.
Eighty five.
Any public comment returning this to Volton for rezoning request, sir? Step up, come up and.
I'm getting trouble orienting myself, but I think the city pound is right up there in the.
Just you run across the road due north.
Uh, my only comment would be you're setting yourself up for complaints from the dogs barking once people move in right across the road. They're really understanding phenomenal value. It's, it's gonna happen.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that.
If you would, can you state your name and you got three minutes to speak?
What? You see to me, okay. Um, I mean, growth is inevitable. We're not, we're not gonna be able to stop this. Um, however, because of the proximity of the pound and the pound being there first. Um, I just offer the suggestion that the, the physics of sound. That instead of building fences um to separate the residences from the, this road there in the pound area. Maybe they might consider leaving a green space, which would better absorb the sound. And provide more of a buffer between the residences and.
And all that would come up, could come up in when the large scale development plan comes forward. Right now, we're just deciding if that piece of property meets the zone. Of a one point five for the neighboring neighborhoods. Whenever, your comments would be welcome. Whenever we get ready to talk about the actual subdivision and what they're planning to build and, and appropriate buffers around that. But right now, it's mainly just a, does the use of the land best suited for, for our one point five? Anyone else?
What's also just the, on the rezoning part to the south? Right there where those all the, the dirt's turning and everything, but yet to be our orphaned properties. What, are those all one fives?
R one.
R one.
So it's R one to here and then R one to here. This is R one five, that's R one five. So it's a mixing ball.
Any other public comment?
Pop. There's motion. As, as far as what's there, I mean, it goes.
It does.
You could easily do the.
The reason.
Like when we're saying it, like it's almost like you could go from a one to a one point five. As far as like the housing density. Cause if you were in a one point five, you could build it as R one, right? Like, you could almost do, I know it's less houses. But you could do like the R one against all the other R ones and slowly work your way, but that may not be uniform in a subdivision.
Keep, keep in mind, ours is density based, so an R one would require four per acre average. And the R one five is six per acre. The fact that they're gonna do five or six bin track, did you say four one acre track? That means probably the rest of lots are, could be much smaller. Based on that, just because those big lots will average rolls out, because we're only looking at the total density for the whole track.
Which you are losing some of it to floodplain and stuff too, so you could.
Now, there's no flood.
Oh, I thought, I thought something was, no, it's just a drainage dish along that.
Yeah, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason they're looking at those bigger tracks along the river, there is a big twenty four inch sewer line that's right across through here.
That's correct.
I mean, it matches up. That's the thing. I mean, for sure. And even when I drive through there regularly, it, I mean, it's, it's going to happen there. So it's not, it's kind of surprised that it's not yet.
I move, we refer to the request rezoned from A one to R one point five. For the Washington County Parcel, eight three oh five two zero three six nine seven five zero down here.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sound? Alright. It will go for city council in two weeks. Let's forgive me, I'm not sure what the date is. Larry, do you know off the top of your head?
Two weeks from Monday, whatever the hit, but I'll look quick.
Sixteen, I'm so.
Sixteen.
From.
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, I'm sorry. There's a spot on my screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
R? Uh.
Yeah, pretty.
Uh, this is, I have, next item is a rezon on Cactus Jack that we initiated. Um, from M U B two to R two on three, three, or on one parcel. And A one to R two on two additional parcels there at the.
And just for reminder, this was all R two before we get into comprehensive in twenty twenty four. They had, they had just rezoned it R two.
Now, like we, we voted last meeting to initiate this rezon request, so. Is there any public comment for this piece of property?
Well, we initiated last time, so I move, we approve. The initiated rezon on Cactus Jack and which road from M V two to, to R two and from A one to R two on the two mentioned parcels. There you go.
Done.
Motion, who's the column second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Three parcels is enough.
Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah, there's one from M U B two to R two and two from A one to R two. Alright, motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion, alright, that will go. Sixteenth or fifteenth, do whatever we decided, fifteen, alright. I'll write that up here, maybe y'all remember next.
Okay.
Alright, and next item is request for rezon from A one to R one. Parcel eight oh five two oh three three four oh dash four five oh for Mr. Gutierrez at one one zero nine four Orford Road.
And I didn't think, we, we did add a variance request on to that.
No, we're on the Orford Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I pass?
I'm, I'm.
No, no, my, my, my fault.
Skip number.
Yep, I skipped number three.
Why wouldn't it?
I'm passing my, I'm passing my, I've drawn lines.
So we did complete a variance request in this. Uh, typically, we would put sidewalk on both sides of the street. Obviously, in this case, there is no room for sidewalk on this side of the street. There's no houses facing it. Same thing here, no houses facing, same thing here, no houses facing it. And this is right on the edge of steep itch. So it doesn't make sense to put sidewalk on the outside of that road anywhere, because it's not actually servicing any residences. So they did ask for that variance.
This is for the preliminary plat for the P U D on uh. The Viney Grove eleven nine, uh, fourteen ninety eight Viney Grove Road by Protea Development. You want to come up and tell us kind of what? What's changed from?
Nothing has really changed from the U D meeting, other than it's more detailed now and you can see exactly where everything fits. Same amount of units and the six uh, single family lots up front.
And Chuck is, Chuck's been in communication, but I think, is this the floodplain line?
Yes, somewhere.
So part of this road, just this corner right here will be in floodplain, but engineers are dealing with that, and I think we've already seen some.
Yeah, I think we've already got it worked out.
Yeah.
I think based on the drawings that you sent us for the design, I mean, my opinion is, I, I think it needs a little bit more. Layer, maybe it's not the correct word, but I mean, they look pretty plain. Um.
The building.
The building.
Oh.
It's a building. Cause I mean, I mean, we're.
I don't know how to make a stream.
No, 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 no.
Way to go for some stops.
Yeah, no, the, the actual design standards for the uh, structures themselves. Uh, the single family has, you know, just about a three foot area brick on the front. And I, I think I would certainly like to see a little bit more masonry somewhere. I know the, the photos, uh, examples that were given to us. Before were, had a little more uh, eye appeal than, than what these do. I don't know if it was just for something that you directly did or uh. You know.
Yeah, and we. We didn't change in that power lead. Wrong game to be on it. Um, that was just what sent by the uh.
Maybe they're showing a little bit more masonry on this. Is that what you?
Yes, yeah, well, that's what I, myself, I'd like to see a little more uh, masonry, I mean, a band, you know, completely around the structure.
And that's why we, with the pub especially, you know, y'all can tell us what y'all want to see around it and we meet those needs.
That was one thing that, like, I like the single family home up front. Um, that looks pretty good. Uh, but when I saw the quadplexes, I did fear like the wrath of the community once it was built. And because they do look very uh. Uh, Roche Coleman, like, as far as like that kind of subdivision, I know, I'm sorry. And uh, and so.
It is, I think it's just that black and white monotone.
Yeah. It is. But what I did, this is probably not correct, but what I did is I, I teach a civil engineering architecture class at the high school, so I just threw them up on the board of both and I said. I threw up the single family homes, like, what do y'all think? They're like, oh, yeah, it looks like a very humble one. I threw the other one up on, like, there's a quadplex. Every kid, it was like unanimous, and they're kids, but they're also the future and they think funny, but everyone was like. Mm-mm, you know, and they just, and so my assignment for them today was give me ones that look better than, that stay in the same square footage. That had one car garage, you know, just like, give me that, just like what you have right here. Most of them went with something like this, you know? Cause they cost more money, cause they got more things on there, more little uh.
I think they're very similar. I think the difference there is it's got the shutters and it's got the brick in a little ways and that makes all the difference.
On the front.
Very, very minor changes.
Yeah, that's just.
The minor changes. So this is just the brand. Yeah, this is the brainstorming, like the garage jutting out, I think is the one thing that.
Structure wise, that's what, you know, whatever we throw onto that is not represented.
I think the, like, the garage jutting out was one of the things, all the kids kind of like, hmm, we don't like that, but now it's probably more expensive. To insulate something above a garage also, and so that's where a lot of these plans had something over the garage. So there's probably more, I don't know. Uh, on that, but it would be cool to see maybe if y'all were going with more than one design in your quadplex to see them. But then also, uh, even if they're all going to be the same, to see something a little different than this. I think on our previous one. We asked for a percentage.
Yes.
Of brick on a road, or not brick, masonry.
Masonry.
Content on a road facing side. Do y'all remember what that was? The percentage is.
Seventy thirty?
I, I don't think it was from downstairs always, or.
Yeah.
Probably.
But not to extend on the second one.
So I'd like to see that, just to kind of stay consistent, maybe.
I mean, y'all can put that in the pub, can't you?
Yeah, yes. And so that's what I, I wanna, I, I would love to give them something like that. That way, when they bring something back, it doesn't waste their time. So we can say like, this is what we're looking for. And we said masonry. Could be like the hardy board siding, it could be brick, it could be, right, we were just saying, like, stay away from the vinyls. Uh, but that percentage, like, if we could go ahead and give it to them, I think it'd be helpful for them. And I didn't know it was the first floor, so that's something, us talking about it again already kind of reminded me, cause I didn't, I didn't remember that.
On the fourth, like, I mean, I'm not sure if you look at the. If they're breaking that entire garage, I mean, percentage wise, it might fit there, but I think it still needs a plan of something around. You feel, I think on the, the drawing, but entire, now I can't tell, the draw, the drawings are a little skewed. Uh, one detail says that all brick, one detail says it's brick and vinyl both on the same.
Still have to do.
You can see the band on that one.
Yeah.
What y'all want to see.
Alright, the houses behind it, you see they got the bricks go up, grease later shell in the vinyl, you know, just to break it up somewhat or something.
Right, just a solid wall of, of white vinyl.
White vinyl.
Mm-hmm. Now, for clarification, Larry, is that, I mean, do we need to specify the design standard in this portion?
So to you, I mean, you, you could refer to something that you've been thinking about, the road with this to lots. I think you go ahead and present and just have them bring back.
Okay.
Final style on the other next month, maybe, and handle that portion. It's a pun, so I think we will, we'll hear that. I think they probably.
That would be helpful, so we can.
And you can get started with.
Help form an approval on eighty two dollars.
You got, you got plenty of time, not gonna delay.
Yeah.
Is there, is there, uh, if anything, y'all can send us what y'all want to see on the design?
Yeah, they need, they need to decide that night, just so that you can bring something back eventually.
And see mine was, I, I was thinking the whole front, so that changed, like, I thought it was that seventy thirty or seventy five twenty five, the whole front facing.
Those, those were two story units, and I don't think, are these two?
Wasn't that the one that?
Mm-hmm.
And I think one was the part of the masonry up to the second story, and then the second story could be a different material. They only on the front facing side too, not on the.
We'll get the public comment just a little bit.
Yeah, so I, a- anything roadside now. The one weird one that I was thinking about today too is the ones, the two lots on Viney Grove. They're different because they would have a side facing Viney Grove along with. The road, whatever the road name would be in here. So that's another one to discuss, so that's not later on, we go.
Nobody fans.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a road facing, so that's just like, let's verbalize it, so we know if they're gonna be facing the same way of all, it's six houses, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the driveway's going out, and there's green space between that and Viney Grove?
Yes, and some screen.
Will say though, it's, it, it won't be any difference in what you got in Bell Need, because if I think on Bell Need, you're, you're looking at the side of the houses.
Yeah. Okay, and that, that was the thought, is go ahead and get it verbalized, cause if that was something, cause that was, if it's road facing sides, that technically is a road facing side.
Yeah, the nice.
Go ahead and say it.
The nice lot, that would be Bell Need, you're looking at the sides of the houses.
Okay. And then it'd be the people across the street, you know, that's, the, you know, they had the hiccups, they, they want swamp rats and stuff, and so. Now that they don't get their swamp rats, is the vinyl siding and the screening okay, or do the two front lots look out to the road? Right? And that would be the other thought, is that might even make it possible. It couldn't have a driveway to that.
No, you'll, you'll see the sides, but you ditch will have to be fencing up.
Yeah.
And there'll be, that's where we're putting our green spaces or.
Okay.
I think from the city standpoint, we would rather have you face that in the direction you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because the.
Cause a green space.
It will have a major drainway, we really don't want any more obstructions in that.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. And that, that was my thought, is like, go ahead and get it said.
He would have to build a bridge structure over, that's how much for him.
Well, no, 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 don't drive there.
Yes.
I'm saying the front, like, your front door faced Viney Grove, but your driveway would still be in the access road. Your garage would still be in the access road.
Oh, you're on.
But I didn't, I didn't know if it needed to be, or the people across the street, that's what I was saying, like, the fill driving down Viney Grove Road. You have to look at.
Like I said, the three houses in Bell Need, I mean, you're looking.
They're all facing that way too. Okay. It was just a thought, wanted to have it out there before we passed it up, and then thought about it later and go, hmm, why didn't we make those two on Viney Grove at least look that way? But if it matches all the other houses, it makes sense.
Break up the bottom somewhere, that's how Bell Need is, they're all not bottom side all the way to the grass.
Three, three foot bands and.
So on the six houses, we just want the wainscot, the brick wainscot, is that sufficient, or do we want? Roadside to have a percentage? Just so we have it for them?
Personally, I mean, I'm good with three foot band, no wainscot around it.
On, on all, six lots or just the ones that are facing the road?
Um, personally, I mean, I would want it on all.
All six, all.
Yeah.
In all four sides of?
Yes, yeah, I mean, yes, sure.
I think that was a question he was asking.
Yes.
Just on the front facing?
Well, I mean, I'm just, my preference would be a full band, I mean, three sixty, but whatever.
If, if, if we didn't require that, my compromise would be the percentage on the front to be higher, rather than just a wainscot. The whole front to be a masonry siding, that way they could use a hardy board or whatever, then the vinyl would be on the other three all the way up and down. So that would be my compromise, like, before going out. Like, I don't know which one they would prefer, but I like either the brick wainscot, three foot all the way around. Or I like the front face to be masonry stuff, and then the other three sides could be vinyl, top to bottom.
What, the majority of our buildings, have we got any buildings that are using vinyl anymore?
Either being a ward and stuff, they're using.
I was gonna say, most of them, I thought were using hardy cord.
But I have, they got the fifty fifty, some of them. One thing I think about the vinyl, all the way down to the bottom is, when you mow, you hit rocks, you get hoes in it, uh, and then there starts some trend of other things. You know what I mean?
So which would y'all prefer, or are we gonna ask them which they would prefer?
I prefer, I mean, if I'm gonna do that, then we gotta keep that standard for everybody too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, with the puds, with the puds, that's the one thing we did with the last pud, is we asked them to do the front face. Right, what was the, it was a percentage?
I thought it was closer to eighty percent on the front, on the top, first level.
On the first level.
On the first level.
That's what I remember, but I don't know if that's correct.
I think you're right, I think.
With the puds.
It was on the street level.
The good and the bad is that. Every time.
First floor.
Sit here and discuss it, it does.
Kind of put it to where it's not even feasible, and that's the whole point on this, to make it, make it look good, but still gotta be affordable too.
What is a better price for three foot wainscot all the way around, or a masonry front on the six houses and the three sides of the vinyl?
I mean, I'll have to run it and send it out for bid, see what comes back.
Yeah, I just kind of wondered.
I don't know, top of my head.
But you would say you like the wainscot all the way around?
I think I'd rather the wainscot all the way around then. Like you said, we need to get into it and it gets cold, it cracks, and then you start falling off and it's like you said, just to.
I mean, I like it too, I mean, especially mowing and everything, I mean, it does save that siding, so.
But that would be good for those, and so the rest of it, there is no, like, we're good with the six houses, as long as it's got the three foot wainscot, there's no problem.
Yeah, it matches what's beside it.
Okay. Then it goes to then the other one, which is the quadplexes, correct? Or the duplexes?
There's, sorry, that was, I took them out, because we're gonna put them on, there are gonna be two duplexes on the other side of the road there, but we did mow on the inside, so I can have the road go around me.
So with the quadplexes, what can we give them to save them time on doing this?
I don't have a problem. Basically. I mean, I think I would probably compromise for a full, the full garage being bricked to, again, the wainscot on the, on the sides as well. But I, I think the rendering's just, are a little deceiving, just because mainly the colors and everything is kind of.
And then that one, it did, that one's hard for me, I didn't like, but it's not always about what I like, so, but it was one of those, like, I just saw it and I was kind of, and, and so I test run it just to see in all, on what I picked. And so I just feel like everybody that lives on that road is gonna do.
I mean, that's my point, I mean, we want to make it look good, you know?
So if we had something, I, I don't know what's on that road that is not, you know? I know that some of the different subdivisions have some different styles. What gives it some uniqueness that's still portable? Cause like, Fennel has some unique quadplexes. But they're super.
Six, eight hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, so what is a, what is a style that, that brings a little bit of, of flavor, flair is the word that was used earlier, but. I don't know, I would love to see something different on that. I, I like the single family home. This one for me is, is tough. But I would like for us to give them something that, like he said, the wainscot again would be fine on it.
At least on the end, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, otherwise you've got a two story wall of nothing, so. Vinyl.
And you may not even plan to use vinyl anyways, we just keep throwing that out, because I know it's a cheaper product, but.
I'm making orders.
Yeah.
Cause the hardy board isn't.
Which is like more durable than.
But it is, it's gotta be more expensive, so.
Yeah, they, what, giving some direction?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I agree with the, you know, having around certain percentage to protect it or break it up a little bit.
And so we say brick, I mean, brick or rock or, you know, just something, I'm not sure of a price difference between brick and.
I'd be fine with that, just break it up, something like, it's just not solid vinyl like we're doing.
No, I mean, I don't like that either.
That is, it's not, yeah, plain.
That's my opinion, you just break it up like you did before.
We're gonna change the doors of the cars.
Well, I mean, you know, you say that in life, and I mean, you look at what you, I mean, even just shutters on there.
Fan bill, but they're from the bars.
Yeah, I mean, the shutters makes a, I mean, a world of difference in the appearance.
I think, I do think that one would have went over better without the garages jutting. I think, I think. It would have just been smoother, cause like what you did have, and maybe we can, maybe you could simplify that to fit more of what you have here. I don't know. Uh, that's because I don't did them, so I don't know.
Pushing the garage back in. Make it roll though.
I think too, like, the darkness in between, or like the, like, one of the students made a good point of like, in between the two garages, what lives in there? They're like, they're like, that's your walkway, but it's like, you catch a lot of the, like, the leaves, the trees, they're, they're like, that's just a weird space. There's not enough room. For maybe a bench or a, a family space as much. They're like, it's just a weird spot. And I was like, I mean, I, yeah, I, I get it. But at the same time, like, to push it back into the house or bring the house over it, it, it probably increases cost. And again, that's the goal, is to get away from that, so. And I, I don't know, but I'm sure it does.
Do you have enough information to come back with?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can get Phil to design it.
The other question I had is, you made a comment earlier that a pud typically has a rear access. What was that?
Well, I mean, that's just in the development, I mean, that's in power, that's what, the pud has to do something to make it unique, I mean, and otherwise it's just subdivision.
So what is our uniqueness here that we?
Well, I think, I think we chose to make the pud so we could impose some designs to it.
So we.
You've got, you've got the mixed use elements to the.
Single.
Okay, good. That way, if someone asks, you know, like, well, it's not really a pud, cause it's not the.
You've had a mixed use development with the single family in.
Okay.
Larry, I do have a question though, I know we took the sidewalk, but why don't we talk earlier too about connecting the sidewalk to the park at the back? For East End, and that, and that would make it unique too.
Yeah, and I still think that's a good idea, and I'm assuming that'd be probably along where yours, like.
That's where that dish.
Bench, yeah. East End, yeah.
I had another question on that, cause y'all talked about sidewalks and not putting them on the outside. Because it didn't need to have one on both sides, right? Because there's nothing on that. Does it make, like, what's the pros and cons of having the sidewalk on the inside only versus the outside only? Is there a pros and cons? Cause then you could walk the outside of the neighborhood. Is there a pros and cons, cause then you could walk the outside of the neighborhood without car interruption.
There's no room in the terrain, the ditch is right there.
Would would you move the street in the amount of feet for the interior sidewalk? And then move the sidewalk to the outside of the street? Is it a possibility or does that not work? I was thinking, then, you know, to like, walking around in Sundowner, what do you run into when you're walking on a sidewalk, the cars? So if the sidewalk was on the outside rather than the inside. Now you would remove that same footage out.
We made these driveways are like twenty-two bit long, so the car isn't hanging out over the sidewalk.
That's good.
And and I didn't point this out earlier, but. This is all exterior parking as well, right?
Yep.
So they put in. More than adequate parking for us, which is.
I just wondered what the pros and cons were, it wasn't saying it would be better or worse than one's or the other.
And just what what are you talking about a minute ago, uh the city has a ditch line, he's up that runs along this big ditch. That connects to Mighty Ford Park, they were talking about possibly finding a place to put a trail and connection in. To where they could walk straight into Mighty Ford Park.
And also on your garage, I know, you know, when we brought this, y'all wanted, we don't want a bunch of cars in the road. So they wanted somewhere either to park on the driveway or a part in the garage, and I know people use a garage mostly to storage. But again, back to the point with the garages, you know, we don't really want it, I just, you know, I didn't want one.
Yeah.
But then we talked to Larry and he's like, no, probably gonna want, want a garage.
They continuously park across the sidewalk, they have orders to do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking the ease of it, you don't have to, you don't have to police it if it's on the outside of the drive rather than the inside of the.
Power pole, we have to do all the power poles, and then we have the tension pole, and they could just make more sense.
Yes, it works, it was just a question, it wasn't a preference.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll have any other questions for all the public? Any public comment, if you do, please step up to the podium and name and.
I'm not very good at reading things like that, and I don't quite understand it all, but. Sorry. There is supposed to be an access to Mighty Creek Park. That was one of the issues at one of the last meetings I came to, is that there was.
It's not part of the plans, but it is in discussion.
It's a discussion.
Okay, because there was someone that lives up on Bonnie Grove that was saying it, everybody comes up that way and comes around, they have to go through this. Across and back down just to get in the park.
It would, it would be.
Which is more dangerous.
It would be a walking connection, I'll read.
Correct.
So it'd be basically just for those people that live back there.
Well, they live right there, so walking, you know.
Yeah, we we have a similar connection in Battlefield subdivision, I don't know if you've ever seen it before. But we actually have a connection that comes into Battlefield subdivision, comes in between two houses.
Walked that.
Yeah.
I live there.
It gets used on that.
I'm kind of in the middle on the backside of the. They're all two-story. I'm gonna buy curtains, heavier curtains for my bedroom. And when I sit out on my back porch, I'm gonna be looking right at somebody's house. That's awesome, isn't that awesome, okay? Sorry, it sounded really hateful, but oh my god. Um, is there gonna be any kind of privacy fence or anything to keep children out of that creek? You know, it's snakey.
We don't have any fence in Mighty Ford Park, people are over there.
No, the the, not the creek, sorry, I affectionately call the ditch behind my house a creek. But.
That's great fence, it's running all the time.
Is there, is there any plans for any kind of? Fence to keep the children from playing in it, because they put the big box in there.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing there now, so I mean, there's nothing, you know. Can't, yeah, you crawl down in there, you don't want to, but I mean, you can't keep out of it.
It's a question of who would be liable.
The parents relating their kids going on earth.
We we.
I I grew up playing in creeks with snakes, none of it is just.
I know, I did too.
Well, that that's what I'm saying, you get down to Mighty Ford Park, which is right there beside them, putting fences to keep them out of the creek or the river.
That's the park.
Yeah.
This ditch is not exactly in the park. I was concerned about the children and their safety. And so there is a plan to put a, an access directly from. These two-story. Quadplexes to park, so they don't have to go up to Bonnie Grove.
Seven, I think you talked about that, didn't you?
About the.
The money for? Yes.
And then it is. No through streets, that's, that's just around the outside, correct, right? And the question about the sidewalk is that there's not room on the south end for a sidewalk.
Yeah, and it flows a sidewalk all the way around the perimeter on the inside of the.
On the inside.
So there is a walking sidewalk all the way around, all the way out to Bonnie Grove, comes out two places, there just wouldn't be one on the outside.
Because of the ditch.
Yeah, and there's no houses facing it, so there's no real reason to have sidewalk.
Okay, I think I'm a. I caught up, and yes, the swamp rat still lives there.
Thank you.
Hey guys. Hi, my name's Rick Brown, I actually own the property right behind this such ability. First of all, that's my address up there, should be fourteen ninety-six. Okay, and you guys were talking about sidewalks and all this stuff going back to the park, I'm adjacent to the park. Now, these sidewalks don't go through on my property somewhere. So I got that whole backside behind all this stuff in the building.
It would be in the easement that runs along the granite hedge.
On just one side?
Yes.
Okay, so be on.
That's the only place the city has an easement along the.
On the south, on the south side.
Yes.
Which, we gave them that easement years ago, didn't we? Did we sell it to them or give it to them? Yeah, that's a mistake. Okay, uh also guys, um, my question is. When they start tearing all this up and stuff, what about all my infrastructure that I put in it, cause I got, I just spent thirty thousand dollars a little year ago. Running water all the way from the front of Bonnie Grove Road to the very back. What happened, it's got turnoff valves all the way down through it. So what happens to all that when you start digging all this up?
And this is in your access or your easement?
Yes, it's all, it's all on the, uh, on the north side of the property there, runs right about eight, ten, twelve feet off that fence on it.
And it's in an easement?
Yep. I had an easement done for that, just, uh, probably, uh, well, about a little over a year, year and a half ago, I had to go through all this to get easements. Had all that done.
That's something they're gonna have to work out with you, but I would assume that they probably sent you a new meter back around your property line. Jeff, can you?
If there's water through there, we would just put a meter in it back.
Shorting your yard line?
So I spent a lot of money on that.
Bad timing.
But in the future, I mean, it it eliminates that much part of line, you could have weeks on this.
Yeah.
There is a bet.
I understand that, okay, and, uh, so about getting in and out, there's gonna be roads on both sides, I understand correctly?
Yes.
And so I'll always have a way to get in and out, like you guys are working on this.
That north side, we're gonna take it all the way to progress, we'll be able to get in. And it'll keep the drive open so you can hear.
Okay, okay. All right, well, that's my question, guys, thank you.
Thank you. You have it, sir? He took care of it, okay. All right, any other public comment? So I guess first question would be approval of the preliminary plat, and then we want a table, uh, till next meeting, the design standards. And then we would probably need to do the variance as a separate, or we do it together or need to be a separate? Clear with me?
Yeah.
Again.
All right, so I moved, we approved the preliminary plat. For the putt on land surrounding and including fourteen ninety-six. Bonnie Grove Road. Oh, what did I need to add in there?
Uh, and table the.
Table the 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 design.
Design standards till next.
Design standards till next week.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here now, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, and now we need to vote on the variance for the sidewalks on both sides of the street.
I move that we approve. A variance that will require sidewalks on both sides of the street.
And make a recommendation to the city council.
And make a recommendation to the city council that they can make the final determination.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Okay, all those opposed, same sign, all right. Do you got everything you need to work on? Now make sure you get to the right. Now we're gonna talk about a rezone. Uh, rezoned request from A one to R one at partial eight oh five two oh three three four oh dash four five oh. Rest of Gutierrez at one one zero nine four.
Mr. Gutierrez. Mr. Gutierrez. He sent out all the notices himself, so I mean, he knows what.
We don't have more information on the, the, uh.
We will, next month.
Next month.
All right, so I guess, I mean, this is.
This is the piece of property that had asked for R two, he's brought it back down as a single family. It's, it's A one, he has access to sewer, I mean.
I don't think there's any problems, not, I mean, it fits the.
We don't need to hear.
I mean, we're just getting that A one to R one.
Has asked for the lease.
If this is in there with what the, all except for one house in that area is, and even that one was, it just has a variance, so. I make a motion to approve it.
Is there any public comment on this?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to recommend the, uh, rezoned request from A one to R one, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed, same sign, okay, so you go to city council on fifteenth. Uh, next item is request for conditional use for short-term rental at twelve eleven Colonel Hawthorne Drive by Jeffrey and Tina Arnold. All right, come up. Planning.
Uh, my husband and I.
Is that the right answer?
Yes.
I always question it when I call them all newborns, might get the right one, so.
Uh, we're new to Prairie Grove, uh, our children moved to Fayetteville, four of them, and our four grandbabies, and so we bought this house. To come back and forth between here and Florida, which is where our business is, anyway. Um, because the house is gonna be empty about seven months of the year, six to seven months of the year, we would like to short term rent it, Airbnb. Um, so we, so that's our plan.
Closest one I know of is the one in Salem, that was your father.
Actually, there's one right across the street from us.
Maybe not a legal one.
Oh, sorry, didn't want to out anybody.
It's better for you than we don't know about it.
True, you didn't hear that from me.
I sort of say, as long as we keep up with the percentages of it, so we don't end up in a situation like Fayetteville or else, then.
No, that's why when we came here, the first thing we did, like, well, actually, before we came here, we called several times to ask, you know, what the, what your, you know, what the laws are here. So. I.
Yeah, I think you probably completely.
Probably, yeah. So I guess we don't really know.
Your situation is very common, I mean, we just approved one in Salem, exactly like that, they come and go, just either marrying kids, exact same story.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it makes no sense for us to own a property in Florida when we're gonna split between the two, it's super expensive in Florida. Our kids are here, we'll probably retire here, but this only makes sense to own real property here. Um, obviously, we want to keep our property up, I mean, I want to build value, so I'm not gonna be for events. It's gonna be a minimum of three stays, I mean, three, minimum of three nights stay. Um, I don't know what the requirements are here, I know Florida's very strict with Airbnb. We plan to have fire extinguisher, we have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, signage. Um, I guess we'll look in for direction from you if we're approved.
I don't see any issue.
I make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed, same sign?
We're gonna make this really easy, you're approved, you don't need to do any.
Thank you. There's no, there's no, like, county requirements, uh.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Do you want us to get the Florida requirement to see what we do?
It's, it's a booklet.
Well, I I I was in life sanctuary fifteen years, so I probably did more things to this place than I really do.
Right, well, it's, you know, we don't wanna, I'm a paralegal, so we're all about the legal. Did a, a secondary thing for a business here in Prairie Grove, um, and I did. Been a permit request, I don't know if that gets heard at this meeting or.
No, it's a building permit application or what?
No, we, we're a mobile RV tank cleaning.
Oh.
Company.
Okay.
And we go between Florida, but we don't want to be doing anything illegal here when we're here, so.
So you're gonna be doing the same business here?
Yeah, we're mobile, basically, we just go between Florida and Arkansas.
So when you, when you're here, you're going to be probably doing the business end of it out of your house, is that?
Yeah, we don't need an office, we don't meet clients, we go to.
You just need to get a residential moving site.
Yeah, which we pay for.
You're good.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I've already issued it, well, they'll issue it now if we've approved you, but.
Okay.
Yours should be good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, uh, I have seven, a request for conditional approval for a mixed-use commercial residence at one oh six North Pittman by Wanda. Over house, if I say that wrong. I'm sorry? Are you London?
I don't know where I got Wanda, I guess, that's how I interpreted it off the application, I don't know.
All right, if you want to go and tell us what you're proposing or what you're needing?
Uh, yes, we, we've had some, uh, some problems, and we were forced to move into my business, which is, uh, the thrift store. Um, the November twenty-ninth, we shut the thrift store down, there's no more, and, um, we. Finally actually did get a, a place to stay, cause that's the only place we had to stay. And, uh, but, um, the place isn't open until January sixth, and we just need to be able to stay there until January.
So are you gonna continue to operate the thrift store?
Uh, we just closed it down November twenty-ninth.
You're not gonna operate it anymore?
No, sir.
Well, then there's. You're just using it as a single-family residence.
Yes, sir, just for now, cause there's, if, if we do have to leave, then there's enough work for us to go.
I mean, think about this, because it's in a CBD zone. It hasn't been operated as a single-family house in a long time, that's true, but.
Right.
Now, having come in front of me, but I don't think single thing is allowed in a CPB.
So that's what a residential coming with?
Well, I I thought this request was gonna be for mixed use, operating the business in the residence at the same building, but it's not, it closed the business end of it. So that's just the same. I think when you applied for it, you were still intending on running the business and living in it, right?
Say again?
When you applied for the conditional use, you were planning on keeping the business going?
No, the business was, the business was, I planned on November twenty-ninth.
So we need to.
So. If they were still running the business, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Well, there's issues, there's no way to separate the residents from the commercial size. Because there's only one bathroom, so you can't have a customer bathroom, personal bathroom. And the kitchen's one and the bedrooms are another, so you have to be going back and forth in terms of this, so it's, it's really not set up for mixed use either.
Actually, the kitchen and the bed, and and the bedroom is one. One solid, um, space, and there is a lull in between there.
That's changed, and it's a bust to listen to.
This almost sounds like a table.
Table.
Until it's, it's cleared up.
She's fine with you tabling it, cause she wants to continue living there, is what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it, I think it needs to have some clarity to it before we decide.
So are you moving then?
Yes, sir, um, but our apartment that we finally found, cause there's not much out there, um, but we have been looking. Uh, January fifth is. Uh, January fifth is, is when it's available.
Yeah, and then.
Be out of the building completely.
And then the next person who's going to do something with this space would then decide.
Bob Donner has this building, so I mean, whoever he leases it to next, we'll just have to make sure.
It's a commercial.
I mean.
I wasn't aware of that, um, we were told that we could. So I was completely unaware of that, and I didn't think any, we were doing anything wrong.
Yeah, I would table it, and that gives a month to get more clarity, uh, it almost seems silly to make a rule now when there's no direction.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to table.
Motion to second the table, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? We'll table it till next.
Yes, sir, thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kevin. Motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye?